Planning and zoning commission, we are a full house this morning. I know we also have some folks who are down below listening and if they choose to participate, they need to come forward outside and then come in and come forward to the podium if they wish to. So I'm calling this meeting to order and I will ask if one of our commissioners will provide an invocation for us.
I'll do it today.
Thank you.
Let us pray for a minute. We thank you for this guidance. We thank you for your vision. We thank you for your leadership, oh Lord. We'd like to also make sure a special thanks to the fire department, the safety department, the police groups, and the various nonprofit organizations we have in our area. It's very important that we support them and we work with the leadership. Help us in understanding and working through the planning and zoning agenda today and amen.
Thank you very much. So we're going to go forward and look at approval of the minutes of the October 22nd meeting. Are there any corrections?
Yes, Ms. John, I've got one correction that's, I think substantive. In page four, at the bottom, paragraph H, it says it was not their intention to build something that is going to be a win-win. I think the intention was that it is going to be a win-win, right? So just if we could correct that before we approve them.
We'll make that correction.
Okay. Are there any other corrections? If not, may I receive a motion for approval?
I assume.
My pro motions are approved.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor? Thank you. Those are taken care of. We do have one item of old business which relates to last meeting and that is the zoning ordinance text amendment fiscal court response. And perhaps if Ms. Gray will give us a little bit of an update upon that. For those of you who were either not present at the fiscal court or didn't look at the live stream.
So at the last fiscal court meeting on November 25th, their motion was to push this back to planning and zoning to regroup and come up with possibly looking at going back to the minor final plat option and possibly getting together individuals to help guide that. So officially, their amendment, or their motion was to deny the amendment as presented and send back to P&amp;Z to consider other options.
So that does mean that the amendment did not, it's not enforced for the conversation today?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So I would like to note that that text amendment came forward to planning and zoning from the advisory committee. In listening to the live stream from the fiscal court, there was discussion about other suggestions about review and consideration of the amendment. It is my recommendation, which I'll ask the commission to approve or not approve, that the advisory committee serve as a sub, as a committee to review this response from the fiscal court and that they add to that group a, the representatives that were discussed at the fiscal court, i.e. they discuss that a local contractor, a farmer, and a landowner be added to the review and consideration. As the time of our changeover of leadership and Jim Boyd leaving the commission, that left us with only myself and Mr. Nollet who were, who are members of the advisory committee. I believe that we need a further representative to fill Jim's, Jim Boyd's spot towards the end of the year and I've contacted one of the commissioners asking that individual to join the group at least until the end of the year and it's being considered by that individual. So we will meet as soon as we can and we will gather those individuals if you agree with this recommendation.
I have a question about the future activities that might help influence here.
Sure.
Whatever the results come back from recommendation by the advisory committee comes back to this larger group?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we will forward that back as to the fiscal court if.
Does it also go to the, all the other receiving groups?
Yeah.
The city mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my question would be also that we, do we need to do something to make sure that we're not presenting that amendment to the other legislative bodies?
I've talked to the director about this and where this is a recommendation that comes from you all, I wanted her to get your input on not taking that recommendation forth to them. I think it makes sense since the fiscal court is the body that's going to be most impacted by it. You know, if she did pass it along to them, they would have something on the books that showed split standards between the cities and the county and it, it would be cleaner to have all the handle at one time.
Especially if we're going to decide to take another approach.
Exactly.
We should make sure that we're consistent if we can across all entities.
Right. So I think that we have the discretion to, you know, circle wagons and recalibrate them and send something else forward and not forward our previous recommendations. So if the commission is okay with that.
Yeah, I'd like to make that part of your recommendations, Sally.
Okay.
I have a second question that kind of follows up the, yourself and Dan. I don't recall who said yea and who said nay during that. Will we have a mixed?
Yes, the individual that I have approached from the commission to be added was a nay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, there's one other thing I wanted to introduce into this discussion. It was a commissioner concern that was brought to me. The question was, in the interim, before we have something that does or doesn't adjust the lots sizes, is it problematic for us to sign plats where there might be utility concerns about serving all of the lots? You know, can the utilities effectively serve the lots? What if the utility is declining to sign the plat? And I think this body is protected in its decision-making so long as we follow our ordinances. I know that we are moving with all expeditiousness. I will just point out that the subregs do require us to have signatures from utilities. So if they're not participating in that, there, there could be some problem in the validity of some plats going forward. That doesn't affect any of the plats before us this morning, but it's, it's something to consider when we're drafting this to make sure that we're producing lots that can be served by utilities and that utilities will agree to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Informational note and that's all.
So I would ask the commission's approval for the way in which we will handle this.
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve your suggestion as we've discussed.
Can I have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay, we will move as quickly and as effectively as we can on this matter. Okay, let's move on, onto the agenda then for the financial report.
Yeah, we'll talk to the very large sheet, financial sheet that you have in front of you and I just have a couple of comments. First of all, what we're looking at in the, oh, I guess it would be the second column over is the November year-to-date both expense, income and expenses. And if we were right on budget, we'd be at 42% since we're five out of the 12 months through the fiscal year. And first, if you look at income, I just have a couple of comments again and we've talked about this a lot in the past and that is, oh, you'll see the Danville contribution, again, if we were right on budget, would be at 42% to 75% because it includes, as we spoke before, the fourth quarter fiscal year '25 contribution, which didn't make it into last year's checking account that came in, oh, this year, which is why that's over. And the Boyle County contribution, which is close to 42%, but the reason it's not as high as Danville is they have not yet made their second quarter fiscal year '26 contribution. So if you drop down then to total commission revenue, you'll see, it's about a third of the page, way down the page, you'll see that year-to-date we're at $116,036, which is 60% of our total budget. And again, that's because we've got these contributions from the last year's fiscal year in this year's numbers. So if you pull those out, if you pull out both Boyle County and Danville's fourth quarter '25 contribution, we would be at 40% of our budget income versus 42. And the only reason we're not over is because we don't yet have Boyle County's second quarter fiscal year '26 contribution. So bottom line, everything's okay on the income side. Then we'll go to expenses. And again, I'm only going to just make really one comment on the expenses and that's if you go down about two-thirds of the page down to contractual services, we finally have the bluegrass ad charges in here for their comp plan support and providing a director for us during the time when we did not have a director. And so if you go down to the total contractual services number, which is probably two-thirds down the, almost to the bottom of the page, you'll see our total contractual services expenses so far this year have been $71,084, which is 113% of our total budget. And if you go up two lines, you'll see the $52,663, which is the bluegrass ad charges, which have finally made it into our expenses for the year, which is why we're so strongly over budget on the expense side because we had not budgeted for the comp plan support in this year's budget and/or the director's support in this year's budget. The plan in general was to pay for any bluegrass ad charges out of the cash that we have in our checking account because we, we had a pretty healthy checking account. And we didn't expect the charges would be as high as they were. It's probably double, I would have guessed what we thought they were going to be. But we still should be okay for the total year. We should still have sufficient cash and we still should end above the $40,000 minimum ending cash balance that we want to try to target having. So if you were to pull that bluegrass ad charge out of our total expense column, we'd be at 39% total year expenses versus a target of 42. So again, our normal expenses are in good shape. It's just this bluegrass ad charge that we knew was coming and now it's here. So any questions on the financial report? I've just got a couple of the comments. And one is on the annual audit. That's underway and probably should be done the next, what, four to six weeks, I would guess.
Yes, that should be ready for the January meeting and then we should be able to do the amendment by the February meeting.
Yeah, then again, we'll also then be bringing forward a fiscal year '26 budget amendment, which will reflect our most current thinking and all these charges that we've talked about and additional income that we've talked about will be reflected in the, in the budget amendment. So we do need a motion to accept the financial statement.
Make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Thank you. Mr. Mannan, anything else?
No.
Okay, let's move on to construction sureties. Ms. Gray?
We've got four things on the agenda for this construction surety section. The first one is a release of Jody Sharp's LOC, letter of credit. So we will be releasing the $6,493 letter of credit. It has been reduced twice and that section is completed 100%. The next on the agenda is a reduction for Jody Sharp Construction Company of 75% from $357,000 down to $89,326. There is only one sidewalk left for that section of Hunt Farm, so we're comfortable with that. The next on the agenda is Brown Family Holdings requests the acceptance of a letter of credit in the amount of $1,641,164 as surety for improvement of completion of the bypass center, section four, and we'll need a motion to approve that. And the last thing on the agenda is releasing Nancy Davis' cash bond of $47,888 and that is complete as well.
So Ms. Gray, the only thing that we need approval of is the Brown Fam, Brown Family Holdings?
I believe that's the only thing. I believe that's the only thing we have to make a motion for.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was incorrect. That, for the acceptance and the release of the cash bond of Nancy Davis and the Jody Sharp, section five.
Can those be handled together?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to that effect on those, both, all three of those items.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Would you mind to add that in your motion that it gives the chair permission to sign the contracts?
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about that, but yes.
Maybe a second motion.
We'll have to vote again, but I'd like to also add, to give you the permission to sign the contracts.
And I'll second that as well.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Ms. Gray, anything else under construction sureties?
That's it for that one.
Okay, we're going to move on to subdivision approvals, and we will start with Ms. Gray talking about Brown Family Holdings.
And I believe we're also going to combine some of these in the same motion.
We...
So, we're going to combine items one, two, three, and four together, so I'll go over that. So, Brown Family Holdings LLC have applied for the subdivision of a twenty-nine point nine acre parcel of land located at zero Shannon Way, Danville, being known as Bypass Center, section four A, four B, four C, and four D. And the property is currently zoned, single-family residential. The next on the list is Danville Host LLC has applied for a final plat amendment of fifty-one point three nine five acres, known as Bypass Center, section three, and fronting on Shannon Way, South Danville Bypass, Angos Pike, and being zoned highway business, multi-family residential, RM three and RM four. The next on the list is Matthew and Renee Ellis has, has applied for the subdivision of thirty point eight two two acre parcels of land into two tracts, known as eight zero one five Perryville Road in Boyle County, and it's currently zoned agricultural. And the next is the Saddle Ridge Homeowners Association has applied for the subdivision of a two point five one six acre tract. Sorry, hold on one second. I'm sorry, I went out of order a little bit. The fourth one on the list is not Saddle Ridge, so scratch that, we'll get to that next. But Dan Mann has applied for the subdivision of a thirty-six point nine three six acre parcel of land into five tracts located at four one five six Perryville Road in Danville, and it's currently zoned agricultural.
And all these have been through technical review and have been approved by the technical review?
Yes, there was no comments about these in technical review, and all of those revisions have been made.
Couple of questions, Director. The, the bypass center, which one, final plat, has some notes on it about stormwater?
Yes, yes. So, anything above an acre is required to go through stormwater and get their, just requirements of ensuring that they've met, you know, all the stormwater requirements for the state.
And those, those are approved? The tech, tech committee saw that?
They'll have to go through certain requirements with MJ, or the stormwater director of the city of Danville.
Okay.
Just to make sure that environmentally speaking, they're...
It was more, if I recall, it was more of note to remind us to do that...
Yes, yes.
Than an item that has to be on the plat.
Yes, it's more of a note to say that everything over an acre will have to go through that process, and I don't think it's been that way.
Yeah, just, it was, it was a reminder of having been at that tech meeting.
Yes, yeah.
And then on the Mann property, is unclear as terms of the purpose of that subdivision? Is there anything more than just creating these tracks? To what, to what purpose are we doing that?
Do we have to have a purpose?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just creating, the purpose is creating these other tracks.
We, we've had it, but we haven't defined totally what the purpose means beyond that.
Kendall Wise from Banister Engineering, so the, the purpose, we've created some, some plats for his farm in the past, and nothing's transpired or nothing's sold, you know, and the plan has changed as to what he wants to do with the farm, so the farm's now going to just be five tracts of land. We had, it's kind of complicated over on Caldwell Lo, Road by some utility easements that we created in the past that were actually requesting go away, they were never used, and so we're releasing those utility easements to get those out of the center of what's now a larger lot, but...
Would you pop your microphone up a little bit? There you go, thank you. Does that answer the question?
I think so, yeah. Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. So, would anyone wish to speak in favor of this, besides me, Sir Wise, of course? Anyone want to speak in opposition to these? If not, then I'll ask for a motion to approve those subdivisions, which have been recommended as, through the tech committee, as acceptable.
I'll move to approve.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gray, are we moving back then to the saddle ridge?
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, we are moving back to number four on the list. The Saddle Ridge Homeowners Association has applied for the subdivision of a two point five one six acre tract with improvements known as Saddle Ridge Circle in the Villas of Ridge Field Farm. The property is currently zoned multi-family, and in this plat, there are a variances within the purpose of the plat. So, they are going to dedicate a right-of-way, waive the sidewalk requirements, and reduce the front setback width from twenty-five feet to five feet. Additionally, the city of Danville agrees to the following conditions, to reduce the right-of-way width from fifty feet to forty feet, and to accept Saddle Ridge as built after adding a top layer of asphalt. So, this will require the city of Danville to sign on that.
So, that right-of-way is this extra little stub down below, where's the...
It's really the road. This was a private subdivision, and they want to turn the road over to the city.
Ah.
And so, if you look on the right-hand side, it's the existing road is, is being, and these are the conditions the city put on it, and some of the requirements that we had to approve in tech review in order for it to be acceptable to the city.
And, and so, what is the smaller, is that a trail or a...
That smaller road right there?
Yeah.
I, I believe it is a walking trail, so it's like a pedestrian trail, but I don't...
Sir, either, either come forward or allow your contractor to answer the question.
Either way.
So, what, what, what is the question?
State your name, please, and address.
Dale Shepperson, AGE.
Thanks, Joe. This, this little stub here at the bottom, left-hand side of the plat?
Yeah, that, that is a, that is a gravel access road that, that has been used in the past. It's really not, we just showed, we just, there is a road there, not a road, but a, a gravel access.
Okay. It's not intended as a...
No.
Something, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did, did you want to add anything to that? Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, in addition to Mr. Shepperson? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? If not, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, if I might ask, how long has this neighborhood been built out?
A long time, for about ten to twenty years, I believe.
Okay, I'm just thinking about the fact of these requests of waivers. We could say that the fact of an existing neighborhood coming into the local road system is a hardship that justifies a section one point five exception to standards.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion and include that language, Henry, as you suggested, that we approve the plat.
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, that'll be approved then, and so then I believe we're going to Michael and Jennifer Dutton?
Yes, number six on the list. Michael and Jennifer Dutton have applied for the subdivision of point six two five acres into five tracts located at, on your staff reports, and in the agenda, it says two zero five Old Bridge Road, but I made a mistake, and it's two zero three Old Bridge Road. But these were not advertised in the, in, for public, so just my mistake there. But, so, yeah, the property is currently zoned, single-family. So, these are, it's essentially just a subdivision consolidation plat of a single parcel.
Since we, since we didn't see this in the technical view, want to give us the, any other comments, please?
Yes, Dale Shepperson, again, with AGE Engineering. So, this is, this is a vacant lot that is out on Old Bridge Road, and it has been purchased by the Duttons, and they were going to construct a house on it, or going to construct a house. So, they called us to come out to stake the house out, and when we got out there, the, the two neighbors, the Halls to the north and the Wilkersons to the south, did not realize that the lines were skewed as bad as they were from the road. So, in finding that out, the all three parties, the Duttons, the Wilkersons, and the Halls, agreed to change the property lines to make them at a ninety to Old Bridge Road. So, in order to do that, we've got to create these small tracks to convey back and forth between the parties. So, that's the purpose of the plat, and that's what we're doing.
And, and there's nothing there currently, you know, that...
No, they, they have started some site, they started some site work in putting foundation of the house, but that's, that's as far as it's got.
Okay.
And Director, would you take a look at the purpose after this? Because I think it's a great thing to do, just the wording, so it better reflects that type of thing, because I had a difficult time from the purpose reading that.
Thank you, Mr. Shepperson. I believe there's a comment from the back, and if you'll come forward, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wilkerson.
You'll have to pull it down.
My name is Sarah Wilkerson. We are the neighbors to the south on two oh one, and I just want to clarify for accuracy's sake. We did not agree to all this. It was staked, it was told, this is what we are doing respectfully. We were not asked, there was no engagement of respectful conversation between us and the Halls to the north. This has not been handled well, and the Duttons in the middle have proceeded with not only digging their footers, not within the easements of their current property lines, but also pouring concrete footers and laying cinder blocks. So, I just want to, I just want accuracy reflected, that it's, it's not been as simple and seamless as Mr. Shepperson was relaying. So, thanks.
Well, I guess the question is, understand that it wasn't handled properly. Are you comfortable with the way it's going forward, or are you disputing it and saying that this shouldn't be done?
We are, on our end, and I don't know if Mr. Hall wants to speak on his, and I, on our end, we are not necessarily opposed to the line itself. We're opposed to how it was handled. It was not, you know, we're all adults, you know, engaging in respectful conversation, not coming in and saying, you know, we're going to rip out your dang pool, and we're going to do this, and I'm going to build my house, and look, I'm just going to go ahead and build my house. Like, it's not the way to have handled anything. So, I just want that on, on the record. The, the line itself, on our side, on our two oh one side, it, the line itself is not the problem. It is how it is all kind of transpired.
So, you are not speaking in opposition to this?
No, I'm just, I'm saying, I do not feel like Mr. Shepperson accurately portrayed the, the conversation was had, and everybody was in agreement, because that's...
Thank you.
Not exactly what has happened.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Are there other comments in regards to this? Any questions or comments from the commissioners? So, I have a question, Ms. Gray. You said this has not gone through tech review as yet?
Yes, it was supposed to, and it was an oversight on our, on our side, so it, it was supposed to go through tech review, but...
But the staff does not have a concern about moving forward?
Not from the planning and zoning side. There is a stop work order from the building inspector on this site until this gets resolved in the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that will not be removed until this is signed by all parties and it's officially recorded at the deed room. So, there is a stop work order on it.
So, any motion should include that that would be a requirement?
Yes, yes. So, it, on the plat itself, there is a requirement for each of those neighbors to the north and the south and the homeowners, so if they don't sign, it will not be recorded.
And the only thing I'd like to do is the purpose, just read the purpose on this and see if it really still explains what we, verbally, I didn't see that in there, which is something we do in the tech meetings too, to make sure the purpose, this looks like the purpose from the previous version, but maybe it doesn't. It just, the As and Bs, I had troubles tracking them.
Yeah, we, we over...
If you're satisfied with that.
The plat, purpose, but do you have any comments about that purpose statement?
The one that's on here, I don't reflect what I heard in the conversation. You can look at it, and you can make that judgment call after the fact. You just can't, you want to make sure it's accurate, that's all I'm saying.
So, are we ready to have a motion? It could be that we approve, it could be that we decide it does need to go back and go through tech review, it could be a motion to approve with the caveats that were discussed, or we could not approve it?
I don't see a reason to go back to tech review, it's not that technical, is it?
I, I would...
Square up the lot.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
I think, I'd make the motion to approve it with the contingencies of adding, or the guarantee of the signature of the property owner's agreement.
Signatures, and Director, sign off on the purpose statement.
Yes.
Can I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that'll be approved then. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we're going to go into public hearings. I guess I need to have a motion for us to go into public hearings. Is that accurate? Yes, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on then into public hearings. And Ms. Gray, will you begin by talking to us about the first item?
Yes, the first item is, was tabled from the October meeting. Jennifer Paycheck and John Maudlin have applied for a zoning map amendment from single-family duplex to RM two, or, single-family duplex, RM two to central business on a point nine four acre parcel of land known as one four five East Martin Luther King Boulevard, and it is, like I said, current zoning is RM two, and the twenty twenty-five loom is designated for the downtown district, and so, right there is the parcel of land. So, currently, at the last meeting, I know we had discussed the whole parcel itself being changed, but it's only, she's only requesting now a section of the parcel, and in your staff reports, it'll show you, she's only requesting a section of lot eighteen to be changed at this moment.
So, at the last, last meeting, we were talking about the property outlined in blue.
Correct.
And today, we're talking about the property outlined in red.
Yes, sir, mm-hmm, yep. And so, it's amended a little bit, and there will be a minor subdivision consolidation, so it won't be different parcels that are going to be changed, so she'll consolidate that into one, two parcels.
So, the, the zone change that's requested, is it only on the red outline?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But a plat is going to solve the problem of split zoning, should you proceed?
Thank you.
So, in light of that being so different than we had before, in essence, we're, we're starting over on this. Or are we?
Um, I don't consider it to be started over.
Well, the information that we obtained from the last meeting that we tabled...
Yes.
Is part of this, or can we consider...
Well, this, I would assume, since we talked about this at the last meeting and asked for further resolution, I would, I would gather that it's in conjunction to what was...
So, relative to that, do we...
...from our last meeting. ...from the last meeting.
Relative to that, do we need a motion to untable from...
Yes, we do, and for our purposes, that there is a public hearing where we're gonna be taking testimony and evidence today, and you may also rely upon the record from last time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the first thing that we need to do is to have a motion to untable this from the previous meeting.
Shall I move?
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we can proceed, and do you have anything else that you wanted to say, Ms. Gray?
Um, no further comments.
Okay. I believe we must have someone wanting to speak in favor of this.
Yes, hi, I'm Brendan Chevlin from Hilton Law Office. I represent the applicants, Jennifer Paycheck and John Maudlin. I was not at the prior hearing, but I've been able to watch the video and am familiar with the issues that were, and concerns that were raised. There were two main things coming out of that hearing. The commission had requested the applicants meet with the surrounding neighbors who had concerns about the development in this aerial, shows that primarily the blue area being essentially their backyards, what kind of development would, would happen there. That meeting has happened, and there's been agreement on, with the neighbors on proceeding in the way that's now depicted. One of the other, the other main thing coming out of the hearing was the, the commission, I think, was prepared at that hearing to treat the, the two lots that fronted on Martin Luther King and, and pare those off and, and provide that zoning. That essentially is factored into the agreement with, with the neighbors. They've taken the, the big, the bigger rectangle and divided it up, three quarters of it will remain with the current zoning, and it's anticipated those areas will be transferred to the neighbors, essentially giving everyone a little bit of a bigger backyard and shutting down the concerns of the future, that there's gonna be some surprise development pop up in their backyards. That's essentially what's being done to Lot 10 and 11 there, is they're giving a comparable extension of their backyards there. And new, this is one of the new plats that have been prepared to reflect the change, that the aerial, I think, also reflects how it will look on the ground. I think, as was noted at the last hearing, the area's been listed as consistent with central business on both the current and the future flumes. And I think one of the neighbors, Mr. Riley, is here to...
As soon as you're finished, we'll call upon others to comment.
Okay, and I think he can advise whether what I've said's consistent with their agreement and, and with that explanation, we'd, we'd request the zoning change as amended.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will take comments from others that are in favor of this.
Okay, Thomas Riley, property owner of next particular section. Yes, we did meet with Jennifer and everybody else, and we did come to an agreement as far as taking Lot 18 and dividing it up into smaller sections, and let each person in that area go ahead and purchase part of that to extend their property line back. With that said, we will not have any disagreements about changing Lots 10 and 11 and parts of 18, which connects of 10 and 11 from residential to city business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this item? Would anyone want to speak in opposition? I will then call for a motion.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve as before us today, and I'd like to include in that just a, a thanks to the property owners, that exactly what we hope to see in this sort of situation, that you can talk about this and come to a good resolution. Thank you, and we'd like to approve the, the change.
Mr. Nollet, would you include some justifications that this proposal conforms with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
It's outlined on your staff report on page four, but we talk about conforming to the existing character of the area, preserving open space retention, allowing mixed use, and promoting infill. I think those goals are supported by this proposal.
Thank, thank you, Henry, and I would like to include all that language.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously, then Ms. Gray.
All right, moving on to number two. Express Oil through Tyler Hendon has applied for a site plan for the construction of a commercial structure and associated, associated improvements at 216 Brent Avenue, Danville. The property is currently zoned highway business, so it's right off South Danville Bypass, Brent Avenue and Jane Trail. They will do a demolition of the H&R block that is currently located there, and then construct an express oil change and tire, tire service. There were no comments in technical review, and there are no staff concerns at this time.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this change, this site plan?
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Brad Boaz, with CMW Architects out of Lexington, and we're the engineer for the project, and appreciate the staff's effort helping us do this review, and here to answer any questions you all have on the project.
My only question that I have, sir, is regarding traffic, and if there is any need for a traffic study. I know that there's already a business there. That's my only question.
Yes, ma'am, so, as a tire and auto repair, it's, it's a low-volume business, where not a lot of turnover, like a fast food restaurant. So we didn't feel the need, if the staff has any objection to that, for a traffic study. Like you said, it functions the same way as it does currently with the H&R block.
Questions or comments that he may answer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of this? Would anyone want to speak in opposition to this?
I do actually have one more note. That was discussed in tech review, the possibility of getting a variance due to the right side of, so, they will possibly need a variance, but that was the only note from tech review, so I just wanted to add that.
But that would be handled by the board for justice?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, can I have a second to that?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, that will be approved as well. So we'll move on to the next item, Ms. Gray.
All right. Five B Properties LLC by and through Bruce Robbins has applied for a site plan amendment, adjusting the gymnasium size and location from the site plan approved on, in 2016 on the 15 acre parcel located at 2405 Lebanon Road, Danville, and the property is currently zoned highway business. So this is the original site plan that was approved in 2016. You can see that the gym is different than the current site plan, so the parking, the gym, and size of the gym and all of that has been changed. So we, they have filed an amendment to update that.
Any tech review or anything related to this?
No comments on tech review. It's more of just to amend the final plat because it is different than what is being built, to ensure that it's correct and proper.
Would anyone want to speak in favor of this change? Is there anyone here representing this thing?
Sorry. If you'd like for me to speak, I'll be glad to. I'm Kendall Wise from Vantage Engineering. The Dawson Horkey's recently been doing some work at the site. We initially didn't anticipate a new site plan was needed, just because the proposed gymnasium is actually smaller than what was originally approved. So they actually started construction, and at this point, were asked to update the site plan. So we brought an amended site plan to you, to, to review, and the original site plan included a chapel and a storage building and a gymnasium, and those were the three buildings being added to the property. The chapel and the storage building were constructed very much similar to what the original plan showed, and as Ms. Gray said, the, the gymnasium's in a little bit different orientation, but it's actually smaller, and so, shouldn't be any concern for parking. They have more pavement than any property in, in Danville on that site, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
There's an adequate amount of parking. The issue was in our ordinances, if there is a 5% change in plats, then we have to, we are required to have an amendment, and it is changed more than 5%.
Yeah, there are specific thresholds, and if it had been less than that, then it could have been approved administratively. As such, we're required to bring it to you.
Thank you.
And, and the building's up. So, yes.
So, can I get a motion in regards to this?
I'd like to make a motion, this proved, it's in accordance with our general plan, this sites and arrangements, there's no issues that I know of.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, next.
All right, number four on the agenda. Twinkle Patel has applied for a site plan for the development of a commercial structure and associated improvements on a 3.491 acre parcel of land located at 845 Stanford Road, Danville. The property is currently zoned highway business, and this is the site plan right here. So, the comments in tech review included ensuring that in the future there would be fire hydrant located on this side of the property, and the potential for future roads connecting in the future, but there were no staff concerns at this time, but...
Do we anticipate any issues with that being done?
It's not shown on the plat currently, but we would like to see that in the future, for future development.
Okay, would anyone like to speak in favor of this site plan?
Is Mr. Patel in the room today? So I guess it's just me. Kendall Wise, Vantage Engineering, and the project is to build a fuel center and convenience store. The entrance to the project is directly across from the main entrance to Pioneer Playhouse on Stanford Road. The, the property is larger than is needed for, you know, this fuel center, and future development will happen on that south part or part, open space to the right. We're, we're building a, planning to build a detention basin that handles water quality and water quantity concerns for both full development, both projects, which is the fuel center and whatever happens in the future. So we're assuming full development on the entire two acres, I think it is. The, the fire hydrant that was mentioned in tech review, we, we talked about that, and the, this project is being built by Twinkle Patel. Michael McAfee owns the remaining property around it, to the south, to the north. Immediately north of this property is, is the location where a city street will be And at that time, what we discussed with the fire chief was that when that street goes in and the water mains go in for the rest of the subdivision, that we would place a fire hydrant in that, in that space. And there is a fire hydrant immediately across the street, across, on the other side of Stanford Road, and as, I wasn't thoughtful enough to make the comment in tech review, but one of the commissioners mentioned that if this fuel center catches on fire, Stanford Road will be closed, and they won't have any trouble accessing the fire hydrant on the other side of the street, so, they do have hydrant.
Understood, however, should it be a fire, it's pretty close to an area where there would be a lot of people if the playhouse were in session. So it is a concern, in my opinion.
Right. But they, again, they do have a, a fire hydrant on the other side of the Stanford Road to, to pull water from, in addition to whatever they might have in their trucks. And like I said, in the future, as that subdivision gets developed by the McAfee, Michael McAfee, you know, that's, that city street would require fire hydrants, and we would strategically put one there at the corner of this, this fuel, fuel center, so...
Thank you, sir.
Are there plans to make that a street?
Yes.
And when is that gonna happen?
It's happening.
It's happening right now, okay.
I'm working on a plan and getting the permit for these two entrances. This is, Stanford Road's a, the state highway, so we have to get entrance permits from the highway department. So we're working on getting those two entrances, as well as the entrance for the, the subdivision street.
Will they build a street, will they put the fire hydrant in, or is it, would they build a subdivision?
Yes, sir.
What?
The, the, the fire hydrant and the street would be built...
At the same time.
At the same time, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wise? Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this? Questions or comments from the commissioners? If not, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the site plan.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, the Cornerstone Assembly of God. Ms. Gray?
All right, so Cornerstone Assembly of God through Tom Lane has applied for a zoning map amendment from agricultural to highway business on a 3.61 acre parcel of land known as 2035 Old Lexington Road. And so the current zoning is agricultural. The 2025 flume is designated garden neighborhood. And so, in your staff reports, I do state that the proposed zone change is in compliance with the following 2025 Bull County Comprehensive Planning Goal, Plan Goal and Objective of Grow a Diverse Economy to Enable Infill and Redevelopment in the urban county, urban cores of each city, but it is not in compliance with the 2025 Future Land Use Map. And then, they also included a general concept plan of what they will be developing on that site.
May I ask for clarification? What they are looking at building, does, does that require the change to highway business, or could that be built under the agricultural zone?
This could be developed under the current zoning.
And, and the proposal also requires the change of the property lines?
So, the city right-of-way has been officially abandoned as of Monday, but the land swap would have to come through us through a consolidation and subdivision plat, essentially, kind of like what we just saw earlier. So they would still have to do that.
So, that hasn't happened?
That has not happened yet, and they have not submitted that application to do that yet.
So, all we're really talking about today is the triangular, existing triangular piece of land with the church on it.
Correct, yes, and now, they own up to the middle of that right-of-way abandonment, because that was official of, as of Monday, through the city.
So, that is what's being asked to change from agricultural, agricultural to highway business?
Yes, correct.
And there, there, we've often used churches in agricultural plots, and there's a conditional approval that you have for that.
Yes, yes.
So that's in record of the existing one now? Is that, do you know that whether this was conditionally approved?
Oh, the church, and on act. I don't know about the conditional use, but we did do a research of the zoning, and it has been agricultural since before planning and zoning was created.
At this point, the conditional use would be grandfathered in for that church, so, even if we didn't locate a permit, so...
Yes, that's what I wanted, yeah, so it is in that, in that light, that's all, that's one, that's a starting point.
So to do, just to clarify, to do what they are proposing to do, they could do it on agricultural?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, would anyone like to speak in favor of this change in zoning? All right, would anyone like to speak in favor of this change in zoning?
Pastor Tom Lane from Cornerstone Assembly. It was my understanding that under agricultural, we could not build anything else. What we want to ensure is that we don't have any plans this coming year to build that necessarily. We're just projecting, and our church is growing quickly, and so we'll probably be building in the next couple of years. We're not positive that it won't, we won't just expand the sanctuary and also do that. So, those plans are, you know, somewhat nebulous, but we just want to be positioned to be able to build and not have to have any roadblocks when it comes up, so.
I believe the agricultural zone allows you to have up to 20%, 25% of the land in, in an area being occupied by a building.
That's, and my understanding is we're over that right now.
Well, if I look, when you look at it, I don't see how, even with the proposed use center and proposed sanctuary, that you're going to be over 25%.
Okay.
I mean, it just doesn't look like it. I mean, I didn't do the actual measurement, but certainly the current church is not 25% of the existing land.
The parking lot is not part of that number.
And the parking lot is not counted. It's just the building, it's just the physical building. And it looks to me, if you, with the existing church and the proposed use center, even on the triangular piece of land, especially if you get halfway of easement, oh, you're not over 25% now, then, and so I don't see a need for a zone change in order to do what you would want to do.
Commissioners, the parking lot does count towards lot coverage?
Oh, it does?
Yes, sir.
What's institutional, there's another zoning category, institutional campus, is that something that they could ask for, and that's not commercial? I mean, if it's over the 25%?
I'd have to look into that, but from my understanding, institutional campus is for center.
It's not for center?
Center.
It's only for center, it's not for?
I'd have to do some research on that, but.
Okay, I was thinking of this.
I believe that that was something that we previously discussed in regards to the Danville Christian Academy, and we talked about it at that time.
Yeah, I think that's also covered. It's, it's more than just center, I believe.
So, I, excuse me, just a moment, just a moment, sir. I'll let the call.
Can you use the microphone?
Voices.
Sorry, sorry, I moved away from the microphone. Currently, what they have is greater than 25%?
Currently, with their parking, I would say yes, it's around 50%.
That was my understanding.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No.
Okay, all right, I believe there was somebody else who wanted to speak in favor of this? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this zone change? Good morning.
Hi, Sally Bright, 3456 Lexington Road. I would like to ask for a postponement of this and the five-star zoning change request. The reason is, even though it seems really obvious to many of us in this room and downstairs that there is no way this area should be rezoned as highway business because of the number-one goal and objective, 1A, keeping things the same, protect existing neighborhoods by encouraging conformity to the existing character for new development or redevelopment. The fact that also, if the zoning is not appropriate right now, it should be changed to garden neighborhood, it should be changed to residential, because on the future land use map, both of these properties are garden neighborhood, which is residential, and because there have been no major changes in the area since the comp plan was adopted, since it was only adopted two months ago, less than two months ago. So, what, but the problem is that there have been a lot of behind-the-scenes work on this, including a city resolution that really was an end run around what we've got in our comp plan and our future land use map. So, for that reason, we need to have a lawyer to make sure that, number one, this doesn't go through here with planning and zoning, and, number two, if you guys do deny these zone changes, that the city will not override those. So, I don't know, I've spoken to you guys and, about this before the meeting, is there any possibility of having a postponement until the January meeting? That's my question.
Thank you very much. We'll hear other testimony, and that will be something that will be considered by the commissioners when they make a motion.
Okay, and just before I step down, could everybody who is here against these zone changes, please raise your hand, just so you have an idea? And there are also people downstairs and people who couldn't be here, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. So, I'm hoping that not all of you wish to speak, or, or we'll have to order lunch. Would you, would anyone else like to speak against this? Yes, come forward, please.
Christine Shannon, I live at 2055 Old Lexington Road. As Sally has mentioned, it's only been a few months since the future land use map was approved, with this property being labeled as a garden neighborhood, and nothing has changed. In the, in the run-up to the approval of the Flume, we circulated a petition in the neighborhood and, and in the community, and 389 residents voted against having commercial development in this area. So, in light of that, a zone change that would change this to highway business is definitely not something that anyone would expect to be consistent with the Flume. This weekend, a half dozen of us circulated in the neighborhood to share our information with our neighbors about the upcoming zoning change, and very, very many of the people, especially in Cardinal, had absolutely no idea that this was even under consideration. They had thought that the thing had been settled because of the Flume. This area has some very serious traffic issues as far as the highway is concerned. As you're coming out of Danville, past the golf course, you come to Goggin, you come to Old Lexington Road, and then you come to the traffic light. That's a complicated intersection as it is. And the only plan that we have seen about how this future development by Newcom Oil would work has the access to the gas station on Old Lexington Road. This would complicate that end of the, of the, of the road. And if we assume that people are often going to be going on to Lexington after exiting the property, they almost surely would continue down Old Lexington Road to the exit where it returns to Highway 34. That point is also where Kemper Lane comes in, and it has been the site of numerous accidents, generally because people want to make a left-hand turn, stop to make that left-hand turn into Kemper, and the cars behind do not stop. And if we pass this rezoning, which will make this area highway business, you will have the potential that both intersections at the ends of Old Lexington Road become far more complicated and dangerous. You will inconvenience an established neighborhood that's been there for over 40 years along Old Lexington Road, and I would urge you to vote no on this zone change.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chairman, we have two topics on our agenda. There, we're looking at the first triangle with, associated with the church only.
Yes.
We'll do the same thing with the other triangle as a separate topic, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Hello, you'll see me a couple times, this one's on the fly. Speaking in relation to the cornerstone application, my name's Laurel Hoffman, I am at 2020 Old Lexington Road. The, the, sorry, usually I'm really loud, so I apologize. The concern that I have with the cornerstone application of highway business is it feels like an unnecessary ask, and a conditional use permit might be an option. It sets a precedent, and it's my assumption that it is being coordinated to, as part of a bigger plan, to have the church go highway business, and then subsequently, other land within the area would follow precedence. So, I would just like to go on record in saying that I'm very concerned about a church having looked around the county, request a highway business designation, and I think there's more to it than meets the eye. Thank you.
Thank you. I will urge you to be brief, please.
Yes, I understand, Ms. Davenport, and I appreciate that, and I will be as brief as I can while also exercising my right as a citizen to speak to the topic, so I just want to say hello to all of you and let... Sorry, sorry, okay. I don't like to hear myself echoing. My name is Melanie Thornberry. I have been in front of you all before in a professional capacity. I am not here in a professional capacity as an attorney today. I am here as a citizen, I am here as a resident in very close proximity to the subject parcel of the church, but part of what plays into my personal perspective on it is the professional time and focus that I put into zoning and land use law in this community. And I've been practicing for 20 years somehow, so I do have a pretty good context. What I would like to say is that the commission, as well as the director, were correct in their observation that the church currently exists under a conditional use permit in the zone it currently is, which is agriculture. So, any of their future plans can be grandfathered in under that conditional use. There is not a legal need, that I am aware of, for the church to have a zone change from ag to anything else, but certainly not to highway business. Additionally, there was mention of a zone with which I am very familiar, which is the Institutional Campus Development Zone. I believe it was Ms. Davenport who correctly remembered, excuse me, Danville Christian Academy being here not that long ago, and it was I who represented them at that time, changing from the agriculture zone that they were to institutional campus development. And that was because they were going to be, for the foreseeable future, at different points in time, potentially doing some development, but most specifically, they were preparing to build an addition and do some expansion in other ways. So, my take at that time as an attorney was that to change from ag to institutional campus development best suited that property's use for a school, much in the same way that under our current zoning, institutional campus development does permit a religious institution to exist, and therefore utilize more of its surface area for development of the property, which does include your parking, your asphalt. So, the point of that is that if the church in and of itself, in isolation, is wanting to expand and grow, or if they need additional space, there are other avenues that are available to them if they wanted to pursue a change other than proceeding under their conditional use permit, which is specific to the church. And as was mentioned, my greatest source of opposition to this is that this commission, as well as the community, recently undertook a very long and very thorough, two-plus-year process when I was looking back at the newly adopted comprehensive plan. Over the course of those two years, this commission, and those who may be set on it at the time, and prior directors that preceded our current director, were very interested in community input. They had drafts available, they published what they were considering, you all hosted community forums where citizens such as myself, as well as others that are here today, as well as landowners in any area of our county, could come and offer their input, their concerns, and their thoughts to what you all were proposing. Only after you all listened, made revisions, published revisions, did you all adopt, October the 22nd, not even two months ago, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan and Flume. And the plan adopted by you all now is not in any way drastically different from the one that preceded it, that I believe was dated 2017. So, for this area, it has not ever been shown on a Flume as being appropriate for highway business. It is shown as being appropriate for residential use, including the R1A through R1C that ranges in the density, but not highway business. And that's because the uses permitted in highway business are completely incompatible with this area of our county. And to grant a zone change from what it is now to highway business will fly in the face of and completely undermine the comprehensive plan and future land use map that you all just adopted. The time of public hearing and input was a time when the church, as a property owner, could have attended and spoken and asked that this Flume designation be designated as something other than it is. And at the meetings I attended, there was no one there speaking to that. So, the plan has been adopted, this is contrary to it, and it ought not be changed to highway business, and the church can...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Are you, are you almost finished, because others may wish to speak?
I am. Ms. Davenport, I just had one final thought, which was that there are other avenues that the church will be able to pursue, should they decide that they need to. Thank you all for your time, and Ms. Davenport, I will want to speak on the next one as well, so I'm sorry that you will have to endure me again.
And, and thank you for your comments and your summary of our previous actions by the commission. I look forward to your future comments.
She's a tough act to follow. Good morning, my name is Susan Bloom. My husband Ben, our daughter, and I have lived at 2017 Cardinal Drive for 20 years. The zoning change for Cornerstone in question today, and the subsequent one, item number six, directly impact our home as they are located directly behind our, our house, a home where we have raised a family, invested time and money, and that we love very much, a wonderful neighborhood. And I want to thank P&amp;Z and the commissioners for listening to community members during the planning phase of the comprehensive plan and the Flume. You made a very important decision to keep commercial development out of our neighborhood and out of the entrance to our community, granting a zoning change now for either... Granting a zoning change now for either requests contradicts those actions and negates the work that many, many put into the CP and the flume. We are opposed to this zoning change and to item number six as well from Newcombe Oil. I believe that the zoning, zoning change request for cornerstone assembly is unnecessary, as has been much more eloquently said before me. I have a few observations just from today's meeting. Certainly I have many points to make regarding the next item of business, and I'll wait until that's the appropriate time. But I would just question comments earlier that this is appropriate for our area where we live because it's urban core. That was a definition, I think, that Hannah specified before, that this would be appropriate to change to highway business because this is an urban, urban core area. I don't believe that to be true. I've lived there for 20 years. And I would also comment that representatives for the cornerstone assembly seem unsure of the reasoning for the application and change to HB. It doesn't seem to be something that was brought up during all of the planning, the planning phases for the flume and for the CP. And it, and it seems today to be something in question even by the ones applying. Certainly not by the second party that is applying. I know they are well represented here today, and I think that is our concern, is that there has not been time and availability for our representation, legal representation, to be here, and I thank Sally Bright for bringing that up and asking for a postponement. And those are my comments now. Thank you so much for hearing our remarks, and I would hope that you would take this into consideration as voting down any zoning change proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak? Just a minute, sir.
Good morning and thank you. I'm John Wilkerson. I'm a new resident to Danville, Kentucky, and I live at 2076 Old Lexington Road. My comments and concerns have been expressed to you in a letter, which I think you have in your folder, so I'll not dwell on that. But I would like to comment on the very quiet neighborhood that I thought I moved into less than two years ago. I was attending the reviews of the comprehensive plan 2025, and I understand the wording in that, some of the wording that has been quoted previously, and create quality neighborhoods by protecting existing neighborhoods and encouraging conformity to the existing character for any new development or redevelopment. I also would refer to a paragraph in that comprehensive plan referred to as aging in place, refers to the ability of older adults, of which I am a part, to age safely, independently, and comfortably in their own neighborhoods and community regardless of their age or ability. Now, the point I'd like to make concerning those is that just after I moved in, there's been speed bumps added to Old Lexington Road. As I understand and inquire, because I have no history here, those speed bumps were to protect people who frequently walk on that road, control the volume of traffic, which is used as a cut-through, to avoid the congestion at the current light on Lexington Highway. And so it's also to encourage speed control as well as cut-through. Now, I'm not a rocket scientist, but I do understand congestion and traffic control. Comments have been made about the corners of Old Lexington Road on, as it empties into East Lexington Avenue, and the cut-through by the church that empties into Lexington Road proper, of which the church has not been given any access to exit their parking lot to that road either. And any facility built on this property would not be given any access, as I understand, to Lexington Road for access or egress. Now, I was out yesterday afternoon on another piece of business, and I came by a five-star station owned by Newcombe Oil over on the bypass, and I thought, mama, let me just stop and observe. In less than a two-minute period, there were somewhere between 13 and 16 vehicles entered and exited that property, including trucks. My point is, if this is approved, and you agree to do this and we agree to proceed, there would be all the traffic coming into this facility in the land swap, and we may be going to talk about that next time, but this is pretty confusing to the residents. We approve zonings on the current land, and then we're going to swap it. All the traffic to come into this gas station or service station to be approved has no access from the Lexington Road. It would all come into Old Lexington, passing at least four residents where small children are currently living. Now, in that observation yesterday, that is just a high volume of traffic, and it's going to come day and night. If they run out of gas, tractor-trailers are going to be in there day and night. So I just, I'm through.
We are, we are talking about the church at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Well, but that's the piece of property, but it's kind of been in-run on the conditional land swap.
Understand completely.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Wigglesworth. I live at 103...
Ms. Wigglesworth, I do want to just reiterate that we're sticking to the topic of the church and the application, of course.
We are, yes.
Yes, thank you.
At 103 Cypress Drive in Danville. My house does not appear on that map, which is one reason I wanted to speak. I'm not a resident of this neighborhood. But as a citizen of Danville and Boyle County, it terrifies me that we would pass a comprehensive plan that people use to plan where they're going to buy, where they're going to invest, and how they're going to protect the property, and six weeks later, we would consider overturning that. I'm speaking as a citizen of the community, not as a member of this neighborhood.
If we move on to the next item, I will come back again. But I would like to focus just for a moment on the item with the cornerstone church. As this group shows...
Wait, we need your name, name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. David Shannon, 2055 Old Lexington Road, husband of the person who spoke initially here. She speaks better, so we let her go first. I think it's pretty evident that this crowd here sees these two items as one item. There's no doubt about that. Let's not be naive. But I would like to simply tell Mr. Lane, he's been a good neighbor. We lived on 205 Old Lexington before the church was built. When the church was proposed, we worried a little bit about that traffic flow. And I must admit, when I'm walking on Sunday morning, there's a little bit of traffic that I have to avoid. But by and large, the church has been a good neighbor. Indeed, I think the neighborhood has been a good neighbor for the church. At least one neighbor, when the building was being built, said, well, let me contribute to this because I would like the building to be more attractive, to fit into our neighborhood. So, Mr. Lane, I'm opposing the change because it's allowing a business to be put in that property when you're in tenure or down the road. But we're not opposed, at least I am not, to a youth center or an expansion of your, of your sanctuary.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, unless there's someone else who wants to speak, I would like to receive comments or questions from the commissioners. Would that be satisfactory?
I guess the only comment I would make is that, you know, the future land use map has this area designated as, as a garden neighborhood. Okay, the future land use map has this area, this, this piece of property the church is on designated as a, oh, garden neighborhood. And two of the zones that are allowed within garden neighborhood is R1C and RM2, and both of those have 70 and 75% lot coverage. And, and that is something that obviously, oh, I would think would, would meet the church's needs without having to go to highway business.
And I actually, so that garden neighborhood zone, actually, we agreed to only do single-family residential, so it's not duplex anymore. Just want to clarify for that.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I just don't believe the zoning change is required to do what you want to do, and I think it's unnecessary, so. I don't think it's necessary to do the zone change, even to consider it, to do what you want to do there.
Yeah, I think as a comment that we're, we're not opposed to the church expansion, but there's not a requirement to zone, to change the zoning to make that happen.
And I, I look through the county and the cities that we have now, and you look at churches that have large amounts of their properties set up on here. Yes, they've been, that was done in the past, and there's rules and regulations on here, but I don't see it being an issue that we can't accommodate somehow.
So are we ready to make a motion?
Well, the, the request was to go to Zone HB. Is that, that is what it request was.
Correct.
That is what we're voting on.
Yes, for the church.
I'll, I'll make the motion if you wish. I would move to deny the zoning request in that it is not consistent with the future land use map as just adopted, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan as adopted, and it's not required for the church to proceed with the plans that have been outlined here.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair, if, if I might, this is slightly lengthy, but just an addition for Mr. Nolett.
Okay, all right. Always willing to take additions.
Thank you, Henry.
There's no future land use map or comprehensive plan conformity. The applicant made an argument of changing inappropriates to appropriate zoning, but the proposed zoning is not necessarily required for the proposed plan use. While a finding was stated to support highway business zoning, that zone, by its purpose statement, is intended for development of businesses that require a high volume, volume of vehicular traffic due to the nature of products or services. The church is instead classified as an institutional use under our ordinance, and other applications can accommodate the proposed plan use.
Do you think all the extra wording is really required to discuss highway business and institutional, Henry? I, I'll accept it if you think it's required, but it's a...
I think it, I think it's good to have on record what he's reflecting.
All right, yes, please, then. I'll accept the change to my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nolett. Would we have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, then, please, of denying this change to highway business, please raise your hand or say yes.
Yes.
Then it's denied. We're going to move on, then. I considered a little break, but I was told that maybe that wouldn't be good. So let's go forward.
All right. All right, so the last one on the agenda is Newcombe Oil Company LLC has applied for a zoning map amendment from agricultural to highway business on a 4.26 acre parcel of land located at the intersection of Old Danville Road, Lexington Road, and Kentucky Highway 2168. So this information is in your staff packet as well. The current zoning is agricultural. The 2025 flume is also designated for garden neighborhood, which is just single-family. But, oh, the comprehensive plan review, the proposed zone change is in compliance with the following 2025 Danville-Bull County comprehensive plan goals and objectives. Grow a diverse economy by enabling infill and redevelopment in the urban cores of each city, and preserving community resources by allocating an adequate supply of developable land to accommodate anticipated growth within the urban service area, and to maximize development on vacant land within the urban service area, and promote redevelopment of underutilized land in a matter, in a manner that enhances existing urban form and/or historic features. But the proposed zone change is not in compliance with the 2025 future land use map of garden, garden neighborhood. And so that is the parcel of land we are discussing today. And that is their concept plan as well.
All right, we'll begin by having anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this change. Please come forward. Thank you, sir. Say, state your name and address.
Good morning. My name's Mike Sullivan, 608 Frederica Street, Owensboro, Kentucky. Mike Sullivan, how's that? 608 Frederica Street, Owensboro, Kentucky. I'm attorney for Newcombe Oil.
Just go ahead and move your...
That's it, okay. Appreciate you all hearing from us today. With me here from Newcombe Oil are Bill Newcombe and Thomas Newcombe with Vice Presidents, and also have Brad Miles, an engineer with Newcombe. And we had, had some slides that we, and it includes some of this well on it. You don't, Newcombe Oil was founded in 1924. It's located right up the road in Bardstown, Kentucky. So that's where Newcombe Oil is located.
Speak into your mic.
Okay.
And please, please be as brief as you can be.
I'll try. You're talking to an attorney, and I'll do my best. The...
I knew that.
But I noticed how you handled the last one. Anyway, like I said, Newcombe Oil was founded in 1924, and it's located in Bardstown, Kentucky. That's where it's headquartered. This is the plat that was, I think, on the notice to property owners that shows the 4.268 acres that we're asking be rezoned from agricultural to highway business. I call it Highway 34 and Lexington Road, or 2168. I hope, I hope those are the correct designations of that, of that intersection up there. And so we're, we're talking about this triangular tract right here. Lexington Road is, everybody in this room knows better than me, used to run here and was relocated in about 2013. And what happened is that then this came from the farm that used to be located to the north, north is this way of the highway, and, and has created this triangular tract of ground, and that's the one that we're here about today with, with you. Newcombe asked the commission to approve the zoning map amendment application because under KRS 100.2131A and Section 3.10.6B1 of your zoning ordinance, the existing classification of agricultural is not appropriate, and we believe that the highway business zoning is appropriate. And, and as everybody knows, you know, the, the plan would be for Newcombe Oil to locate a five-star store at that location. The property being rezoned, like I said, was farmland. It hasn't been farmed for 12 or 13 years. Newcombe Oil had tried to put it in hay, but couldn't find anybody that was interested in doing it because the tract was so small. So, so they tried to, tried to put it to an agricultural use after they acquired it and couldn't find anybody to assist with that, but... But it is approximately 4.2 acres. Your zoning ordinance defines agricultural as needing a minimum size of five acres. So it doesn't satisfy the minimum lot size for agricultural use under your zoning. I think that one of the things that I, one of the things that I wanted to point out that was that when Newcombe Oil acquired the property back in 2013, the purchase price was $210,000, about $49,000 an acre, a little bit more than that. I'm not, I'm not from Danville, everybody knows that, but I don't believe that when land is that valuable, that it makes it economically feasible to develop it for residential use. So, I mean, that's one, you've got to think about cost when you think about what future land use is going to be, and when it costs too much to put houses on it, people aren't going to put a house on it. And I think that's a factor that, that we need to remember here. So just to talk a little, we're not here about a development plan. That would come next. We're not here to approve a development plan, but I know people have talked about access and traffic. We don't think there'll be a significant increase to traffic on the roads. Of course, there'll be, there'll be traffic. Let me finish, please. Of course, there would be additional traffic coming into this lot from those roads. The, let's see if I've got this right. So this is, I'm going to move to the next slide pretty quickly because this one's, you know, you'll see it easier on the next slide, but this is the concept plan of five-star, superimposed on an aerial of that, of that property. It has been, it looks like trees there. Those are peace trees that I think grew up wild at some point and been cleared in the center of the lot, but that's generally what, what the lot will look like. And then that one gives you a little better view of, of what, of what will, what it will look like. And as you can see, it's got the, there are two access points off of, proposed off of Old Lexington Road. There will be right turn only signs at both of these. This one is, is going to be constructed in such a way that trucks could not turn left to go that way down Lexington Road. The, the, this is something that you have to work out with the Kentucky Transportation of Cabinet to do, but this, this access point would be right in and right out only. So anybody coming toward, driving toward Lexington would, would be able to access the store this way, and if they're going, anybody going toward Lexington again would go out that way. But there wouldn't be a left turn there. The left turn would have to come up through here. So everything is geared toward Lexington Road, 2168. The, the signs, the five-star sign would be located here, and there'd be one here. It's 24 feet in height is what this zoning allows. It's not going to be 24 feet in height. It wouldn't be any higher than 15 feet. So, so those are some of the high points of, of how it's going to, what it's going to look like, and what they're going to do to try to prevent any more traffic going that direction down Old Lexington Road. The goal of five-star is to build a store that look, that's more, you know, cosmetically fits in with a more rural setting. These are just some canopy drawings, but it looks, this is a store in Shelbyville that it would more closely resemble than the ones around town. So.
Sir, are you, are you going to be completing soon?
Yes.
We would like to hear comments from others as well.
Yes, okay. I would say yes, I'm concluding soon. The, the lighting, people are going to ask about lighting. Lighting would be all directed toward the, toward the lot. Foot candles is how you measure illumination. There would be zero foot candles extending beyond the property line. And also to further reduce impact of lighting and sound on neighboring properties on Old Lexington Road, Newcombe would increase by 50% the amount of trees required by the zoning ordinance along that landscape buffer that you see up there, so that it would have 27 instead of 18 shade trees and 54 instead of 36 evergreens. And in addition, Newcombe was going to, or would agree to build this parking lot for the trailhead at a cost of approximately $40,000 to assist with the, the trail that's in that location. So we would ask that the property, that you approve the application because the tract consists, and this is my finding, final, final expressions here, the tract consists of 4.26 acres that was created when construction of new Lexington Road was completed, severing this tract from the farm located north of Lexington Road. The tract is located at the intersection of two major roadways, Highways 34 and 2168. The tract is less than five acres. It does not meet the minimum size requirement for agricultural use as defined in the zoning ordinance. The property hasn't been used for agricultural purposes since it was severed from the larger farm tract, and that for those reasons, the commission should find that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate, and the proposed zoning classification of highway business is appropriate because of its location at this intersection for the compliance with the parameters stated by your staff member, Ms. Gray, as well, and given the feasibility of, or lack of feasibility to be able to develop this property for residential purposes, including the cost. We're here to answer any questions that you may have, and appreciate you giving your time and consideration to this matter.
Thank you, sir. So I am mindful that there were comments which were made during the previous items discussion which blended over into this discussion, including Ms. Bright's comment that she would like to have this delayed for further investigation by her and her colleagues. So with that in mind, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this change, please? Just offering the opportunity. All right. Would anyone like to offer new information or comments about this particular area? Yes, come forward, sir.
Yeah, and just, if I could just ask, because the postponement, if, if you grant a postponement, then all these people wouldn't have to, you know, get up and say what they're going to say, they would be saying it next time, right? So I'm just in the interest of time, you know? I thought, I mean, can you-
Yes, ma'am. But this commission is very interested in hearing from members of the public-
Right.
-on any of the items.
Okay.
At whenever they come forward, it's important to us to hear from folks who are opposed and in favor of-
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Yes?
Good morning. My name is George Coomer. Along with my wife Valerie, we own a home in 6.25 acres located at 525 Cardinal Terrace in Whiskerwood subdivision. Did you lower the microphone a little bit? I'm pretty loud. All of my testimony this morning is truthful and correct to the best of my knowledge. I appreciate all of your all service to our community. As the former chair of P&amp;Z Board of Adjustments, I understand that you're often in position to make the hard, in a position to make hard decisions, and our task was ignoring outside pressure and personal prejudice to just do what is right, fair, and equitable for the majority and the betterment of our community as a whole. In my time on BOA, we took a great deal of consideration to the neighbors and how our decisions affected them. My testimony this morning will consist of a series of facts, professional opinion, conjectures, and a conclusion, and I'll be quick. Our Whiskerwood subdivision was established in the 1960s. For the past 65 years, it has been a stable and well-established neighborhood. It continues to be a quiet, secure, walkable neighborhood and a great place to reside. This will all be disrupted by the approval of this gas station. There are a total of 62 single-family homes in this neighborhood with a total taxable property value of $15,355,200. That's per the Bull County PVA. Please understand that this is a PVA assessed value, not the true market value, which is a great deal higher, closer to 23 million. And that's based upon the nine most recent sales. Based on the average taxable value of the two existing five-star stations, this new property will equal a mere 1.35 million in property tax value. Again, this is in comparison to 15 million. There's already an existing traffic control problem on Old Lexington and Goggin Lane. This is evidenced by the city of Danville's installation of speed bumps on Old Lexington and KDOT's installation of a temporary speed monitor on Goggin. The approval of this change will only exacerbate what is already a major concern. The intersection of 34, 2168, and Old Lexington Road and Goggin is already congested without the additional, addition of additional traffic on Old Lexington. This is poised to be another intersection equal to the madness at Starbucks and Kroger. We all are familiar with that. This zoning change was advertised as going from agricultural to highway business. I assume it is agricultural, but the PVA site, the P&amp;Z GIS map, the 2025 Flume, and the 2025 Master Plan, all designated as garden neighborhood, which is residential. So question, how is it that the 2025 Master Plan and the 2025 Flume were approved only two months ago? After much thoughtful consideration, much public input, this property was wisely designated to be residential. Now, two, mere two months later, we're considering a change to highway business. Please make that make sense. Professional opinion, I'm a Kentucky licensed real estate agent and licensed auctioneer who routinely represents buyers and sellers in real estate transactions. I serve on the Board of Director of the Kentucky Auctioneer Association. I serve on the Board of Directors of Bluegrass Realtor, which serves 38 counties and over 4,000 members. I do have professional knowledge of real estate value. The ingress and egress of this busy station into a residential street will introduce an excessive amount of traffic to an already well-established residential neighborhood, and will significantly decrease the property value of the 20-plus single-family residents fronting Old Lexington, and significantly to moderately reduce the value of the additional 42 single-family residents in the Whiskerwood subdivision. The approval of this change would introduce land use that is inconsistent with that which has existed for the past 65 years. Just in conclusion, I welcome a five-star station to the east side of Bull County, but for reasons previously stated, this is a very much inappropriate site for said development. Newcombe Oil is not currently permitted to develop this residential property as highway business and forever change the stable integrity of the Whiskerwoods neighborhood. They are asking for your, your permission. I, and I think we, vehemently challenge their request. We implore you, for the good of this 65-year-old, well-established neighborhood and our community, to deny this zone change. Are there any questions to my testimony?
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
I'll submit this for the record.
Give it to Ms. Gray.
Hello, again, my name is Susan Bloom, 2017 Cardinal Drive, and my house is on the plats that you've shown, my property is. And I appreciate people coming to speak who just live in the community. That's, that's wonderful. I wanted to speak just a minute to Mr. Sullivan's comments regarding this investment by Newcombe Oil. Their purchase of speculative investment property is certainly their right. It does not mean we have an obligation to them to allow them to develop it in whatever way they see fit when it is in contradiction to the Flume. And so I think that's an important point to make, that I understand, I'm a businessperson, investment in property, and we certainly all understand that point, but that does not give them the right to be able to develop this in any way that they see fit. And that's why we have a planning process. As I said before, I applaud planning and zoning and commissioners for making the very important decision to keep this area residential for the future plan use map. And also to Mr. Sullivan's comments regarding light pollution, noise pollution, water pollution, I would disagree with that as well. Modern gas stations are extremely brightly lit with LED canopy lights and signage that stay on late at night, if not all night. And this lighting will permanently change the nighttime environment of our neighborhood. Noise pollution, a gas station will bring constant vehicle traffic, early morning delivery trucks, mechanical sounds from pumps, HVAC units, and ventilation systems, creating a persistent background disturbance. And water pollution, this is potentially a major long-term risk. Fuel leaking just from cars, pumps, and trucks can build up over time, wash into the ground during rain. There's also potential for leakage from underground storage tanks that could contaminate soil and groundwater. These impacts alone would be detrimental to a residential area, and once built, cannot be fully undone. So in addition, designating these two properties as highway business, back to the cornerstone in this one, creates an opportunity for additional commercial development in this area, and this change would be just the beginning of overdevelopment and commercialization directly impacting our homes and an area, as George said, 65 years, an established community. We have a lot to lose if these changes are approved, our property values, the quality and peace of our homes and neighborhood, and the integrity of this planning process. I would ask that you please prioritize our community health, safety, and the preservation of our neighborhood by rejecting both of these, and you've already rejected one, thank you, by rejecting this proposed zoning change as well. Thank you so much.
David Shannon, again, I have a very quick comment, and I'd like to have the map that Mr. Sullivan had on there, and I'd like to clarify a couple items on that map. Could we see that map again? That slide? The other one that showed the egress and-
Hold on a second.
Well, if you can all imagine, he's correct. The land in, in question at one time was a farm, a part of a farm. When 2168 was put in, they decided instead of having a roundabout at that intersection, they would then put a traffic light in it. I'm sure the state and the city didn't realize human nature. So what happened with that traffic light? Traffic along Old Lexington became incredible, two-fold, three-fold, four-fold, to the point that one of our neighbors purchased a radar gun and clocked the traffic, and it was going 45 or 50 miles an hour. Why are they using that? Because they don't want that traffic light. They don't want to be stopped there. So to say that, that there won't be more impact because of the station on Old Lexington Road, even though it's somehow fancily designed by an engineer with various kinds of stop signs and whatever, is inaccurate. The other point I would make is Mr. Sullivan noted in, in a point that he made about that little parking lot up there, said, oh, one of the benefits to the community is the trail that is on the other side of 34 will have additional parking. Isn't that good? I've chatted with the city engineer. He says, oh my God, to have a parking lot- He says, "Oh, my God, to have a parking lot across a very busy highway is a disaster." And I had pointed out to him, you know, that little piece on Old Stanford, you know, just that little narrow road, the elaborate crossing that they had to put there. It would be a safety hazard of a huge extent to have people walking from that trail, from that parking lot, over to the trailhead. Yes, the trailhead needs parking, but it needs to be on the other side. So, Mr. Sullivan, that little piece up there, I would tell Mr. Newcombe, throw that away. That is a safety hazard, not an enhancement to the project. It's a detriment to the project.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to start by addressing what I'm hearing repeated about time here. And Ms. Davenport, I mean this with all respect to you, because I appreciate your role as the chairperson who leads these meetings and has to maintain order. But a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in a public hearing on any matter is only the first step in what could be a long legal process. Each matter that is before you all is a separate matter, as you all observed with the church being separate from the Newcombe Oil application. The record is made at the public hearing. That is the record that moves forward through the entire administrative process of a zone change, as well as other processes that begin administratively and have to exhaust all administrative avenues before they can be appealed to the correct jurisdiction in the court system. So while I understand that some folks' comments may seem long or may seem repetitive, I can assure you that every individual who comes here, myself included, to speak to you as a citizen does so because, for whatever reason, the matter before you is very important to us. And we recognize the need to make the legal record at this step. So that is the...
Thank you for that reminder.
You're welcome. I wanted to open with that so that I could then say, that is the preface upon which I come to you again, and I know you probably don't want to hear from me again, but I do so because this is its own matter and the record is being made now. And as the attorney who previously spoke well-observed, I will do my very best to be succinct, but we attorneys are not always good at that. And I apologize for that, Ms. Davenport, but I am going to exercise my right as a citizen of this community that this commission represents and serves as well as you do. With that being said, and it was not how I wanted to start out, the application before you of Newcombe Oil to rezone this property from agriculture to highway business should be denied, and that is because they failed to meet their statutory burden under KRS 10213 and the requirements for obtaining a zone change. First, they could not show that this was in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. When that is absent, the burden of proof lies on the applicant to show that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and the proposed zoning classification being sought is appropriate. Or, excuse me, the other option is they have to show major changes of economic, physical, or social nature within the involved area that were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan that have substantially altered the basic character of the area that is the subject of the application. That second one that I mentioned fails because, as has been noted, you all just adopted the 2025 comprehensive plan and future land use map that this is completely counter to. The other one that I mentioned about the existing zoning classification given is inappropriate and that the proposed one of highway business is appropriate is, I believe, what I heard the attorney presenting this matter for the Newcombs to indicate was the basis that they seek the change. He mentioned the required five acres for agricultural zone. The adoption of that five acres came after the zoning of this parcel as agriculture. So this parcel predated and is grandfathered in, just as we discussed in the prior hearing. The area out there on our future land use map and in our comprehensive plan is designated as the Garden Neighborhood. That was this commission's belief that that area is appropriate only for future use as single-family residential development, not highway business. The vision of the comp plan that was just adopted states that Boyle County is a vibrant and growing community and is committed to support all its citizens, both rural and urban. It also states that it is now the task and policy of the Planning Commission, which is an administrative body, to implement this vision in every decision made by the commission. The introduction to our comprehensive plan states that the plan is to bring the community vision for Boyle County to life, helping address the community needs, guide development decisions, align projects and policies with the community's long-term future. It then goes on to say that this plan is to serve as a resource for the public, for developers, for staff, legislative bodies, community partners, enabling everyone to contribute to Boyle County's success. It's a policy document that outlines the long-range vision for land use, community facilities, and economic development in our community. The reason that I felt it necessary to read that into the record is because it gives the requirement of this commission to find that the applicant met its burden to show that the current zone is inappropriate and the one they are seeking is appropriate. But under our comprehensive plan, when you look at the appropriateness of a sought zone, one factor to consider that is very important is what is the least restrictive or least important, least...I'm not finding the word, so I'm not going to stay trying to find it, but what is the best alternative? If its current zone is inappropriate, then what is the best alternative? And the place that you look for that is in your adopted comprehensive plan, and it is not highway business. That is nowhere near this area. The Garden Neighborhood has been determined by you all in the comprehensive plan to be the most appropriate alternative. It's been determined to be the best alternative for the development of this area as a whole because it would honor the neighborhoods that exist around it already, in which, in the objectives and goals of our comprehensive plan, you all first say that a goal and objective is to create quality neighborhoods, and the first bullet point under that is that is protecting existing neighborhoods by encouraging conformity to the existing character for new development or redevelopment. And I also want to point out that the user guide in our comprehensive plan specifically states that your goal in adopting the comprehensive plan was for the users to be your staff, who is here today, the legislative bodies, when making decisions on zone changes or amendments, to ensure the long-term vision for the community is a consistent point of reference, and that the comprehensive plan will be used to guide projects and priorities for the community over the entire planning period. Residents are also told that they can use this as a guide when addressing proposals -- proposals, excuse me -- and other matters before legislative bodies, appointed boards, of which you are one, and commissions. It also says that developers and property owners should use the comprehensive plan as a guide for minimum design criteria, development plan review, approval process, and required permitting. This property was purchased by Newcombe Oil in 2013. To be honest with you, I don't remember if the connector had been finished at that point or if it was in process. They made a business decision to purchase it. When you buy property in the state of Kentucky, you, as a buyer, are to understand what you can use it for by looking at local governing ordinances as well as state ones, and you take a risk if you need to pursue a zone change or any other change to your property in order to use it the way that you want to. Some investments succeed and some investments don't, and it's nothing personal to Newcombe Oil or Five Star because I use the gas stations here. As they're nice gas stations, they're well-lit, they are clean, and they are appropriately located. I know, Ms. Davenport, I'm being long-winded. It's what happens. So...
I would like to have others have the opportunity to speak.
Oh, I understand, and I do think that, under the law, it's required to give them an opportunity to speak, even if, in your opinion, I take too long. So I am going to wrap up, which was my plan, by saying that this application should fail and be denied because they have not met their burden under the governing statutes, and now I feel confident that I have done the best I can do as a citizen who cares a great deal about our community and who cares a great deal about the processes working as they should and being able to count on them as a community. So I appreciate your indulging me so that I could make the record as is required under this separate hearing matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but we're going to take a very short bio break because some of us can't quite make it. And then we will come back. So, sir, as soon as we finish five minutes of bio break, I will hear from you, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
But we are the driveway right between the two Newcombe Oil five-star entrances. So, I want to thank you all for listening. I think someone mentioned, "The reason we're here is because it's important." This is extremely important to me as someone that has been part of this community and my husband who had to leave to go back to work. But we're raising our child, our other child's at center. Ever since this situation unexpectedly resurfaced on November 10th, I've thought about it every day, every single day. And everyone else has eloquently expressed all the different reasons for why we object to this and why our concerns are present. I will not belabor those points in the interest of time and your time specifically. There are just a couple of things. One, this particular plot of land has additional space that the service station will not be using that could be used for additional retail as well. So, the unknowns are a concern as we look to a zone change in addition to obvious things that we've stated about the gas station. I think for me, at the end of the day, as a parent, as a citizen, as a resident of this community who's raising children, and other parents who are trying to raise children in a safe environment, we need to be cognizant of that. And I just ask that you try to put ourselves in, or put yourselves in our shoes. We're not talking about a gas station up the road or down the way. We are literally talking about a gas station on top of an existing, single-family home neighborhood, and my home in particular. We've invested 24 years in this home. We love this home. We love this community. And I just ask that you please vote no. And thank you again very much for your time. Thank you.
Lenny Demeranville, 2965 Waterworks Road. So, we've been talking a lot about the Newcombe Oil situation. And as I've been sitting here, listening to comments, something that just got said, triggered in my mind, I've been thinking, I don't know a whole lot about zoning, but when I think about highway business, I assume that most of the bypass is highway business. And so, I've been driving down my, the bypass in my mind. And I've been thinking about what business there would I want on that corner? And my answer is none of them, right? This isn't just about Newcombe Oil, although, right, there's been a lot of talk about that. I'm not specifically opposed to Newcombe Oil. I'm opposed to this zoning change that would allow any business to go on that corner, given the current uses, the look of the town, all the comments that have been made. And so, I just want to, I think that many of us that are here would agree that this isn't necessarily just about a gas station. It's about any business that would go there.
Ma'am?
My name is Fran Halloran. I live at 302 Briar Cliff Lane, which is Old Bridge. And I drive in and out of, from Old Bridge into town many times during the week. And that corner is interesting. It's challenging at times. What I find is that driving in to Leck, into Danville, and going past all the greenery and the open spaces is a very relaxing experience. And I get into town and I don't feel hassled or harassed, and I value that. I also come from Connecticut, and I've only been a resident of this area for 16-plus years. And I find, when I first came here, that entrance into Danville was so attractive that it really made us want to continue exploring, living in this community. I have not been disappointed by it, and I value it. And I really think we need to consider very carefully what we want our community to live, to look like. One of the things that was expressed in the early exploration of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map was when the community got together out at the showhouse, many people also expressed how important it was to keep the green areas of our community green. And I want you all to think about that as we proceed. Thank you.
Audrey Powell, and I live at 2056 Old Lexington Road. And I am a new member of the Whistaker Woods. I've only been there two years. But part of what attracted me to that area was, it was family residence. The neighborhood was a neighborhood that you could walk in. What I find is that the neighbors get out and walk, and that's how I met my neighbors there. And living on Old Goggin, I never knew my neighbors because there was no walking area. So, you never knew anybody. I know my neighbors here. I see them. We say hi to each other. You see people come and go. And walking outside is beneficial physically and mentally. And in a time of mental health crisis, to have people that are aging in place and able to be self-sufficient, this neighborhood supports that. The additional ruling of it being a business area increases and changes the whole complexion of that community, and we will become isolated. And that is not good for mental health or physical health. So, I think we need to consider that this change is not beneficial to this, not only the community, but the residents therein, and therefore residents of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think we will move now to any comments or questions from the commissioners.
We're closing this part of the public hearing.
I would like to close this part of the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that if there's any closing statements, that's where our bylaws counsel for this time as well, from the applicant to offer a rebuttal, that's...
Anything from the applicant?
And if not, I have one or two questions for the applicant.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Henry.
Madam Chair, I know you're not going to believe this, but briefly, and we understand all the concerns of the neighbors, but what I simply want to say in closing is I think that the facts show that the current zoning agricultural is not appropriate for this site, and that business is appropriate for this site for the reasons I previously stated and Ms. Gray stated, namely, the fact of this relocation and redesign of 2168 has resulted in this major intersection here that would make business the appropriate use. And we respectfully don't believe residential is going, is an appropriate use for this area, given its location. And for the other reasons I previously stated, we asked for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Smith said that he had some questions for you.
You, yeah, thank you. You spoke to highway business being appropriate based on the major intersection and the nature of the road. Any other justifications where we have to make these findings about the appropriateness of highway business if we're going to offer a recommendation in favor?
I was citing that in your, at the end of your report, you noted various consistencies, and I was citing to those, as well as, as the issue of looking at something, looking at something other than highway business. For example, well, if it's, it's not agricultural, you've got to make that finding first. And then, it's like, well, we advocate that business, highway business is the appropriate use. And one of the things you would consider, well, what other uses would there be? And that's why I cited the residential factor and the price of this type of property. It's not the type of property that could be feasibly developed for residential and due to its location. And so, those are the additional reasons.
I appreciate you taking the time to spell that out for me. My other question was whether there are any conditions or restrictions that Newcombe might be ready to offer that could address any of the concerns today. You may not have anything to that extent, but...
Well, in looking at this drawing up here, the, you've already got landscape screening for trees, it's 50% more than required. You've got signs that are lower, at 15 feet, that are lower than the highway business, 24-foot height. And, and we've tried to design these exits so that, and we've got the right turn signs. Those are the things we can think of. Now, we aren't here on a development plan yet. And so, there could be a discussion about some of those things if, if we got to that point. Those items could be discussed at that point as well.
Understood.
And if, and, you know, I will say that regarding this trailhead, I mean, it's not, it wasn't, I want to say it wasn't our idea. That's something that in discussions, somebody expressed an interest. We said we would support that, you know, but if there's a better location for it, that's something we could discuss.
Is that it?
I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, now, I would like to move the public, close the public input part of this and have a discussion amongst the commissioners. Any comments, any questions that you would like to make?
Yeah, the observation is pretty clear. It hasn't been that long ago since we did our comp plan and the future land use map. And that relies, that's a big, significant item for my background. We spent, as it was stated here, two and a half years creating that document and the corresponding attachments. I need to have that as one of the leading, leading issue potentials that we have on here. Because if it doesn't meet the flume, then we're in trouble. We've got to deal with, how we got to deal with it, type of thing. Makes sense.
And I think in the same sense with Commissioner Collier and Mannan and I, we're all on that drafting committee for the comp plan. And we heard lots of public comment. And, and we tried to address as much as we could and tried, in the areas where we thought we could not, tried to explain why and where areas that, that we felt had to be contrary to what neighbors would want, and tried to work out some kind of compromise.
It is, it is one of the more difficult corners we have around that's not developed.
Right.
It's an extremely busy area. Traffic is going to be what it is, no matter what happens on these properties.
There's been some comments about why it, why we are considering this at this time or reviewing this at this time. When an application is filed, whether it is or is not completely consistent with what the comp plan or the future land use says, we have a responsibility to, to bring it forward, address it. That is what the purposes are of, of what we're doing today. We certainly have had a lot of involvement in getting public opinion, preparing the comp plan. It was a lengthy process. But when an application is filed, we have a responsibility to address it, make decisions about it, and so forth. Just for myself, and this is purely a personal comment, I understand the tension between desire to grow economically and grow a city, and people who have homes and they want it to stay exactly as it has been. That's always the tension that happens when something comes forward to planning and zoning. And so, we have to weigh what is best, what is part of our future plans, and then make decisions with public input. But certainly, just wanted to say, I understand what the tension is here that we're dealing with.
I do have one technical question. It had to do with, I believe Sally Bright had brought up a comment about requesting a table or delay, and that would prevent us from voting today.
It would.
Is that, I don't know.
Why would we do that?
Yeah, why would we do that?
That's my question. I'm asking the question.
A reason to table would be if there was something that was missing from the discussion.
Yes. I wanted to make sure we stated that out loud.
Right.
If we believe there's something that is missing, that's the only, that's...
I mean, I think we, we've, today, we have had all the parties present. We've had a large turnout from the community as well as the applicants. We've heard both sides of this. To me, I think it would be unfair at this stage for us to postpone.
I agree. The awkwardness that comes, that the only times I've seen tabling make sense is if we believe there's a section of the population not represented.
Right.
Are we ready for a motion at this time?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the proposed zoning amendment based on the testimony that we've heard here today, that the proposal is not consistent with the future land use map and the comp plan that we've just adopted. It does not reflect what the work that we have put into those documents, that the applicant has not demonstrated that we must make this change in order to proceed. Development in that area inconsistent with the, is inconsistent with the comp plan. And Henry, please add.
If, if I might. There's not been demonstrated conformity with the comprehensive plan. It does not conform with the future land use map. The proposal specifically contradicts the comprehensive plan objective of protecting existing neighborhoods. The applicant has made the argument of changing inappropriate zoning into appropriate zoning. The appropriateness of highway business does not necessarily arise from upgrades to the road. Upgrades to the road better accommodate highway business, but they do not on their own make highway business appropriate. The appropriateness of highway business is further drawn into question by neighbor testimony and concern about traffic, other negative effects on the neighborhood. And letters submitted by the public have also expanded upon these, including concerns about water runoff and the location of the site, which renders it an entrance into Danville. The appropriateness of highway business might also be set against comp plan goals, including providing access to walking resources, identifying and protecting landscapes within our community. For those reasons, we find there's no comp plan conformity, that we're not changing inappropriate zoning into appropriate zoning with this application, and there's been no arguments of major changes.
Thank you.
I'll second. I love lawyers.
So, I believe we've had a second from Mr. Mannan. All those in favor of denying, please raise your hand or say yes.
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 Okay, we have a few more pieces of business for the commission, so if you will file out quietly. You're welcome.
And, and we're not opposed. We know, you want to do stuff. It's just, yeah. Thank you.
Please leave.
Hey, guys. Hey, guys. We need you to move on out, please. We've got a continued meeting.
We need everybody to settle down, please. Everybody, thank you.
Please move outside to have conversation.
We need to have, we need to move into executive session.
It's not even executive session. It's still public.
Let's go public.
We are moving into private session.
Okay, we're ready to move into new business.
Is there any new business?
Folks, we're ready to move into new business, please.
Hi, Steve.
See ya.
We're ready to move into new business. So, the first thing that we need to do, ladies and gentlemen, the first thing that we need to do is make a motion to come out of public hearing, correct?
I make that motion.
Can I have a second?
And this is to discuss personnel matters? Is this to discuss personnel matters?
No.
Eventually.
Eventually. We're going to move on to advisory committee, but we need to get out of the public hearing, I believe.
Yes, we're voting on that now.
So, if we could get... We're voting on that now. We're out of public hearing. Okay.
Okay, so, under new business, is there anything from the advisory committee beyond what we've already discussed? Nothing today. Anything from the budget committee? Okay, we need to move into a, we need to move out of open session to discuss personnel, a personnel matter. So, sir, I'm sorry, you're going to have to step outside.
Get out here, JJ.
Hey, JJ.
He's chairman of the board.
Thank you. So, do I need to have a motion to do that?
Yes.
Can somebody give it to me?
I have a motion.
Thank you. To move into a private session for personnel.
Executive session. Second.
Second. All those in favor? Yes?
Aye.
Okay. [inaudible] I believe we've had a second from Mr. Mannan. All those in favor of denying, please raise your hand or say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to move into new business.
Is there any new business?
Folks, we're ready to move into new business, please.
Bye, Steve.
We're ready to move into new business. So, the first thing that we need to do, ladies and gentlemen, the first thing that we need to do is make a motion to come out of public hearing, correct?
I make that motion.
Can I have a second?
And this is to discuss personnel matters? Is this to discuss personnel matters?
No.
Eventually.
Eventually. We're going to move on to advisory committee, but we need to get out of the public hearing, I believe.
Yes, we're voting on that now.
So, if we could get... We're out of public hearing. Okay.
Okay, so, under new business, is there anything from the advisory committee beyond what we've already discussed? Nothing today. Anything from the budget committee? Okay, we need to move into a, we need to move out of open session to discuss personnel, a personnel matter. So, sir, I'm sorry, you're going to have to step outside.
Get out here, JJ.
Hey, JJ.
He's chairman of the board.
Thank you. So, do I need to have a motion to do that?
Yes.
Can somebody give it to me?
I have a motion.
Thank you. To move into a private session for personnel.
Executive session. Second.
Second. All those in favor? Yes?
Aye.
Okay. [inaudible]